Good evening. As with the custom of the League of Women Voters, we always start on time and I think we always try to end on time. So I want to welcome you to the Davis City Council District One and District Four Candidates' Forum. I'm Mary Jo Bryan and I am President of the Davis League of Women Voters. The League is a woman, uh, the League of Women Voters is a national nonpartisan volunteer organization founded in 1920 to educate and empower voters to promote democracy. The League encourages informed and active participation in government and works to increase voter understanding of public policy issues. A League of Women Voters chapter was first established in Davis in 1957 and has been active in a number of civic activities, including holding nonpartisan candidate forums like this. Today, our chapter numbers over 100 members and we are active in voter registration, voter service, studying healthcare policies, and helping educate citizens about the city's general plan. If you are not already a member, I hope you will consider joining and we make it very easy right over there with a QR square. And anyway, so tonight, in partnership with Davis Media Access, we are hosting a discussion of key Davis issues with the candidates of the City Council District One and Four. Dan Carson, Kelsey Fortune, and Babu Vitale from District One, and Dan Morel and Gloria Partita from District Four. Before we get going, I want to say just a bit about our recent drawn Davis City districts. A fuller explanation is on the handout you received when you arrived. Although our City Council will continue to govern the entire city, we are now electing council members by geographical districts. Right there. District One encompasses much of far west Davis and District Four east Davis. To determine your district, go to the website or use the QR code on the handout. I'd like to introduce our moderator, Michelle Famula, who will walk us through the tonight's agenda and explain our forum process. Dr. Michelle Famula is our League Board Member, serves as Chair of the Healthcare Committee, and serves on our Voter Service Committee, which is responsible for this forum. She and her family have lived here for over 40 years. So thank you all for being here and I'll turn it over to Michelle.
Thank you, Mary Jo. Good evening, my name is Michelle Famula and I will serve as moderator for this evening's forum. I'm joined by Nikki Neff, my fellow League Member, tonight's timekeeper. And this evening, we have our candidates, as Mary Jo said, for City Council District One and District Four. Here is our forum process. Each candidate will give a one-minute opening statement. After opening statements, candidates will respond to five moderated questions. These questions were selected by members of the Davis League of Women Voters and three of these questions were sent to the candidates one week before the forum. All candidates will have an opportunity to respond to each question and each candidate will have an opportunity to be the first respondent to one of these questions. Following moderated questions, we will move directly to audience questions with each candidate once again having an opportunity at first response. We'll end with closing statements in which each candidate will give a one-minute closing statement in the same order used at opening. Here are speaker rules. Speaker order was determined by a random drawing held earlier this evening. By this process, we have identified that District One candidates will start us off with their opening statements, beginning with Babu Vitale, followed by Dan Carson, and then Kelsey Fortune. District Four candidates will then provide their opening statements, with Gloria Partita beginning and Adam Morel second. Candidates are seated on the panel in front of you in this order. After all candidates have given their opening statements, moderated questions will begin. Each candidate, as I said, will be the first to provide a response to one question rotating first responses across the panel. Each candidate has 90 seconds for their primary response to the question. Candidates will be advised of their time with a 15-second warning yellow card from our forum timekeeper and a red card when their time has ended. After the primary responses are completed by all candidates, I will ask if any candidate wants to add a 30-second follow-up response. Candidates should indicate they would like to make a follow-up response by raising their hand and I will call on the first to respond and take the next candidate in order. If necessary, we will rotate the order of follow-up responses. Responses will be limited to only one follow-up response per question per candidate, please. When there are no additional candidate responses, we will move on to the next question. Our timekeeper will advise the candidates when they have made, uh, met the response time limit. Following moderated questions, we will move directly to audience questions with each candidate having at least one opportunity to answer first with a one-minute response. But note, there will be no follow-up responses to the audience questions to ensure that the greatest number of audience questions can be asked and answered. In conclusion, candidates will each give their one-minute closing statement. We conclude with our audience instructions. Please note, there will be no intermission, so audience members are therefore encouraged to take breaks as needed. For audience questions. Audience members are asked to submit questions during the first half of the forum by filling out the three-by-five cards they were given as they arrived and passing them to the center aisle where they will be collected by our League volunteers. You are welcome to pass your question cards to the center throughout the forum. However, at about 8:00 PM, I will ask everyone to pass any remaining question cards to the center aisle for collection and collation. Finally, throughout the forum, members of the audience are asked to refrain from applauding or in any other way demonstrating support or non-support for any candidate during the forum so that all questions and answers can be clearly heard by all. We are grateful for the participation of all candidates and the opportunity to have community members as live audience, for the best experience of all in attendance and those online. And with respect for our community and our democratic process, the League asks that all are attentive, respectful, and considerate of our candidates and neighbors. At the end of the forum, we will then ask for your applause to acknowledge all of the candidates. Our forum will begin. We begin with opening statements and, as I said, by random drawing, we will hear first from Babu.
Thank you so much to everyone for coming tonight and to the League for putting in the work to hold this forum. Really appreciate the invitation. I'm running for City Council because I believe our community can be a model for social equity and environmental action. I'm running on three priorities: housing for all, climate action, and community cooperation. Davis can and should house all our residents, our workforce, our teachers, and firefighters, and service workers, the low-income residents, the unhoused. I'm on the Social Services Commission where I'm proud to have led the fight for affordable housing over the last few years, but there's a lot of work to be done still. We can also be a model for transitioning to 100% renewable energy economy and stimulate our economy in the process. I serve on the Board of Cool Davis and my entire career has been at the intersection of equity and environment. Finally, all of this work is not just the work of the City Council, but also the work of the community. So I'll create ways for the diverse talents and abilities of our community to plug in to the policymaking process. All of this requires leadership. It requires the ability to articulate a vision, a moral vision, and also the experience to implement that vision through the details of policy. Thank you again for the opportunity to be here tonight.
Thank you. Dan?
Good evening, everyone. We're living in a time of great uncertainty. There's a land war in Europe, high inflation in gas prices, increasing interest rates, COVID, extreme heat events, drought. All of this could dramatically impact our city and our residents. But in these uncertain times, I think I'm the kind of person you ought to try to keep around for two reasons. First is that I've got a broad policy background to deal with just about everything or anything the next four years could throw at us. It's a background in health and social services, transportation, criminal justice, and other policy areas. The other issue, the other reason I think that you should keep me around, is that I've, while we all have some very interesting ideas to offer here at this meeting tonight, I do have a track record at the state and the local level of getting things done, of turning really good policy ideas into policy reality. I will work to strengthen the city's finances, develop our downtown with economic, I'm sorry, with economic development and housing, and accelerate our shift to 100% renewable power. I really look forward to our discussion tonight.
Thank you. Kelsey?
Thank you, Michelle, and thank you so much for moderating this evening. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum, and thank you all for engaging in this process with us, those of you who are here in person and those of you who are joining us virtually. I'd like to acknowledge the land on which we gather. This is the land historically of the Putwin people and they continue to pass on the, uh, their traditions and stewardship of this land from generation to generation. I came to Davis nine years ago to pursue a PhD in economics and I found my home here. I love Davis's green belts, the parks, and so many other things that have been community-driven projects to begin with. And I think it's important that we get back to a community-driven process in our, uh, our government. I, I am here because of the climate emergency we're facing and that is a process that must continue.
Thank you. Gloria?
Good evening and thank you to the League and to everyone that has come out this evening to spend this time with us. I came into my first term on City Council with a solid track record of community activism and building diverse, strong community relationships. I led the city as mayor during the toughest times our city has ever seen and spoke up for the vulnerable in our community, our small businesses, and our city staff. My proudest accomplishment was being a leader of the nationally-recognized Healthy Davis Together, a testing program which saved lives and allowed me to use my talents to build collaborations. I also saw, I also oversaw the formation of the Department of Housing and Social Services, which will transform our public safety for the better. I would be honored to serve a second term on City Council and continue to bring out the best in Davis.
Thank you. Adam?
Now the mic is on. I think everyone is thanked, everyone who could be thanked for the evening, so I'll just move on to me. Uh, I'm a typical non-born-and-Davis resident. I came to school here along with my girlfriend, now wife, at the time. I earned my bachelor's degree here, put myself through college. Uh, I went on and earned a master's degree, again, putting myself through that. My wife and I both grew up in the Bay Area and like what's happening in town now, our kids are unable to afford to stay here. We got priced out of our home. So our next best choice was Davis, which we loved, being students here, um, and we could see raising a family here. We've been in our home for 20 years now, the same house, 960 square feet, three-bedroom, one bath, and two teenage daughters. And I'm running because I've witnessed the slow decline of the infrastructure of our city and the services, and that's why I'm running.
Thank you, Adam. We'll now move on to the five moderated questions. Each candidate, as I said, will have an opportunity to be a first respondent. Continuing in order per our drawing, we will begin our first question with Dan Carson. Dan, our first question is this and it relates to communication. Many residents have been surprised to hear of significant city policy proposals, for example, the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan and the Downtown Plan, that will affect all residents. How will you regularly communicate and interact with residents of your district as well as all of Davis?
Great, thank you for that question. So, our city has a strategy on communications. We did, we did some research to find out what channels do people pay attention to city government through. Uh, for example, uh, the newspaper is a big one, increasingly Nextdoor Davis is a larger one, and to try to get a handle on what media will, are people paying attention to. So I will pay attention to that as well. I know that letters to the editor and, and op-eds in the, in the enterprise are often a good place to start, but you have to use social media, you have to use the emails that are, and I've tried to be responsive, as responsive as I can be. When someone reaches out to me in my district for help, dealing with weeds or a sidewalk that needs to be fixed, I try every chance I get to respond immediately and quickly within that same day. I may not have the answer to their question, but I will let them know I am working on it, I am reaching out to the appropriate parties. I am that chain in the communication between our folks and our state, our city bureaucracy. Uh, you know, I can relay their concerns, I can pester them, I can follow up and make sure that their, the issues that they have raised are paid attention to. I cannot promise everyone that we will tell them the answer they want, but we will give them an honest answer and we will make sure they know what their city government can do and what it can't do.
Thank you. So, Kelsey, the question, how will you regularly communicate and interact with residents of your district as well as all of Davis?
Yeah, so I think it's really, really important that we get back to having regular conversations with each other. And that doesn't just include council, but also staff. We need to be engaging our staff with our nonprofit partners, our staff with our public, and, and our council with those, with, in all of those groups as well. I am, you can regularly find me around the community, you just take a look at my website and there, you, you'll know where to find me, and that won't stop. I want to be available, not just virtually, not just by email, not just in public comment. I want to sit down with you and actually hear what you have to say, and we have some lights. Um, I think I have a really great example of, you know, getting people engaged in, in the process so that we don't have to come to this point where there are these plans that come out and people are surprised by them. I am on the Board of Bike Davis and we, in the past year, have created a, uh, a relationship, a working relationship with staff, where, where we actually can meet with staff and discuss the projects that they're working on, the things that we're concerned about, so that there isn't that gap between the public and the city.
Thank you. Gloria?
Sure. Communication is my jam, right? So it's what, it's the thing that I love the most about being on council. We get an overwhelming number of emails, not all of them positive, but I can say that I honestly enjoy answering those emails, understanding what the problems are. I'm often that person that people will approach, usually like on public transportation for some reason, and just have conversations with me. And I, uh, use that skill when we were working on the Healthy Davis Together program and it was so vital to get information out to people. And, and social media is great, we did do this study, but we learned very quickly that the most vulnerable in the community, our essential workers and our seniors, were not being reached. And we had to, we had to really find ways to get that information and we learned a lot of lessons there, and those lessons we will take forward to use for communication and outreach. For instance, with our, uh, our, um, community that doesn't speak English, we began advertising on, uh, radio, on Spanish-speaking radio channels and just to play in ways that we had never thought of before. And it's going to be really important to use all of those lessons to continue.
Thank you. Adam?
I'm a down-to-earth people person. I have no intention of sitting in the ivory tower and just answering emails and phone calls. Uh, I actually had thought about this, how I would reach out to the public. I'd have monthly barbecues, picnics down at Slide Hill Park and invite the district, come down, talk, shake hands, get to know people. It's a good way of getting a feel of what people are thinking and then also planting those seeds of, well, this is what we're thinking about, and getting direct input from the people face-to-face. It would also help build community, neighbors would actually be able to meet each other and people they don't regularly interact with. So it would be a way of building communication and community from the ground up. Another thing with regarding staff, and I've said this before, on one of the first days if I'm elected, I'm going to try and meet with any, as many staff groups as possible and see what they need to succeed in their positions and how they can better serve the community and what, uh, either council or management isn't providing to them for them to be able to do their jobs effectively.
Thank you. We're going to hold follow-ups after everyone has had an opportunity to say their first. So does that conclude your statement? Yeah, I didn't want to cut you off. And Babu, the last response to that question about communication.
Thank you, yeah, that's, that's a really important question. All of our commissions have the mission, among other activities, of doing community outreach. Very few commissions actually do this on a regular schedule, but this is an important principle of not just waiting for the community to come to you, but hold meetings so that you go to the community actually, and especially make contact with underrepresented groups. As we know, it's, it's difficult to come to city council meetings, to come to commission meetings, express your opinion, so that kind of outreach to the community is really important through commissions and also through this amazing network of civil society organizations that the city is in constant contact with. The election also, this campaign has taught me that a lot of the way that, um, information moves through these communities is through word of mouth. So to continue holding neighborhood meetings, to keep receiving people's questions and their ideas, is very, very important and we can do that on an issue basis, both within the district but also for the entirety of Davis because even though we're elected by district, we represent the entire city. And who knows, I might just keep on knocking on doors, you know, it's been, it's been pretty fun so far, just listening to people's ideas and hearing what they have to say and their concerns and hopes for the city.
Thank you. This is the moment, I said, when you would have an opportunity for a 30-second follow-up if you had a follow-up to that question? Anyone with a follow-up? Dan?
Sure. So to add on to Babu's legitimate point, our knocking on doors is a tremendous way to communicate and, and learn what the priorities the folks are. In 2018, after knocking on 10,000 doors with my team, we came to the conclusion that fixing our roads and bike paths was a huge priority and we pursued that. I will also say, our move to district elections, while it has some threat of leading us down to a, a becoming parochial, also does make, potentially make us pay much more attention to neighborhood issues.
Thank you. Anyone else with a follow-up comment related to communication? Yes, Gloria?
Sure, yes, and I, and you know, getting out there in the community is, is vital. And if there is an issue that somebody has sent via email or, you know, some other way, I have often gone out and met that person or gone out to take a look at what the problem is and tried to find solutions for those, for those issues. And commissions are an excellent way to filter and to listen to the community.
Additional follow-up from either of the other candidates? All right, I'm going to move on to the next question, and this one we'll have Kelsey respond to first. It relates to fiscal liabilities. Davis is facing major fiscal challenges with large unfunded liabilities in infrastructure, employee retirement costs, et cetera. How can the city meet its financial obligations in a manner that residents will support? Please be specific.
Yeah, so most cities get the majority of their tax revenue from their downtown core. Davis is an exception to this because our downtown is relatively underdeveloped. There's a community-led downtown plan which can help us create more revenue for the city and a more vibrant downtown for all of us without creating significant new infrastructure costs. This was drafted, I believe the draft was done in 2019. Unfortunately, staff time has been spread thin by peripheral projects as well as other things. And, and so we are just getting an EIR draft, an Environmental Impact Report draft now, which, uh, updates our downtown so that we can create that revenue. Second, I think we need a new general plan that reflects the community vision for the coming decades, including this exact issue. Right? This should include concrete plans for increasing density throughout town so that we can create revenue for our city as well as provide housing for additional people. Third, I think that it's very important as we go forward that we look back at our previous policies and any new policies we plan to implement to figure out if they're just going to cost us money.
Thank you. Gloria? How can we, the city meet its financial obligations in a manner that residents will support?
Sure, and, yes, and our city does indeed face significant challenges and meeting our city's financial obligations in ways our citizens support means first understanding what the expectations of our citizens are, then finding a balance between those expectations and what is feasible. For example, our roads have been in terrible disrespect, in terrible disrepair with a trajectory for decline. And shortly, um, well, when I was elected in 2018, there was a roads tax which our citizens rejected. And that same year, I worked with others to put together a 10-year, $84 million plan to improve our roads. It has, it's not enough, it's not enough money, but it threads the needle between expectations and feasibility. So the new roadwork that you've been seeing is a direct result of that, of that work. Other ways I've advocated for citizen-friendly financial solutions is supporting the search for grant funding. The city has initiated a very aggressive grant strategy resulting in 23.7 million in, in grant funds. And lastly, we need to work with our nonprofits and our community organizations to fill the gaps that our, that our city can't, um, service. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam, how can our city meet its financial obligations in a manner the residents will support?
Well, to start with, we need to be paying our bills when they're due. We have a pension liability because, not because employees weren't paying their contributions, but because the city took a deferment on theirs to CalPERS and got behind in their payments. So that's one area is to keep up with our current bills like most people should. We need to also build a robust retail sector. Yes, we have downtown, but we need to do more. We need to encourage more investment in, in the downtown core and in the other established shopping malls we have. We need to be a destination for people so that we're not just using Davis resident taxpayer money, but we can actually bring in taxpayer money from outside of Davis. And that's where you really bolster your budget. We need to spend more wisely. The city spends millions of dollars on consultants and contractors when we should be having staff to do these jobs. Yes, sometimes when you have a one-time thing, you need a consultant or a contractor, but speaking from experience as a city employee, there are numerous functions that aren't being filled. We have stormwater positions, an IPM position that's been sitting vacant for two years, and we've been paying contractors and consultants to perform these functions when a rank-and-file member would be more effective. We need to be utilizing technology a lot more effectively. We have disparate databases throughout the city and no unifying database that all departments can utilize.
Thank you. Meeting our financial liabilities. Babu?
Thank you, yeah. There is some good news on the horizon with both infrastructure and pensions, to give credit where credit is due to the, to the previous city council, there is a transportation, an infrastructure plan in place that devotes a certain amount of investment going forward for the next 10 years. But also in pensions, the cost curve is going to start going down towards the end of the decade. All that being said, we do need more revenue and the clear opportunity, and Kelsey did mention this, is that we get a smaller percentage of our general fund revenue from sales taxes and commercial property taxes in other cities of comparable size in California. Cities grow economically and thus generate revenue when they have a clear economic identity that attracts small businesses, that attracts investors. We already have a cultural identity that can be transformed into an economic identity. That's sustainability. So sustainable energy systems, sustainable food systems, sustainable housing systems. What we need to do is fast-track permitting for those entrepreneurs who satisfy our criteria around equity and sustainability, work with the university, create small business incubators, and generally support this idea that sustainability can be the catalyst for economic development and thus revenue to help us with our unfunded liabilities.
Thank you. Dan, same question.
This is an issue I focused on my four years very heavily. When I ran in 2018, we had about an $8 million a year annual funding gap. Through good policies and collaboration, we've got it down to about $4 million. We can get the rest of the way with several measures. One is, in fact, following through that, on that downtown plan. Economic development will generate a proper- Economic development will generate a property and sales tax that will help close the gap. As Gloria mentioned, going after grants aggressively. In some cases, they pay for improvements, but that also can take the place of money we would otherwise have to spend from the general fund on maintenance. The other thing is that $84 million road and bike path repair plan that Gloria and I wrote as a subcommittee, we're in year four of that 10-year plan. We have insisted every year in fully funding each next year's allocation of money from the budget. And the key here is that you can spend a lot of money on reconstruction, but you can spend a lot less money over time if you simply maintain your facilities. And we're investing money in parks, and we're investing money in other kinds of infrastructure in this community. We are catching up to where we need to be, but we're not done. We have work to do. And part of my argument to folks is, if you want somebody who's going to sit there every year and insist that that road money go in the budget, you might want to reelect me. If you don't, you might be taking your chances.
Thank you. This is the opportunity for a follow-up if anyone has another. Thank you. Adam, yes?
A couple of other things about cost savings with the city and spending money more wisely. We opened the Respite Center to help with the homeless situation, but we had nonprofits and faith-based organizations within the community already providing a lot of these services. Paul's Place be an example. What the city should have done is sat down at the table with all the stakeholders and say, "You know what? We have some money. Can we help you?" Because a nonprofit is going to be able to stretch that dollar a lot better than government. Government is not good about spending money, and nonprofits are.
Dan?
So, I think the city does have a very good partnership with nonprofits. Paul's Place is being built, and most of the funds were raised privately. It will be operated by Davis Committee Meals and Housing. We did kick in a million along with the county to help them get across the finish line to build it. We did vote to zone it so they could be built. In many places across the social services we are involved in, we are working with organizations like Communicare at the Respite Center. I think it's a good partnership, and I hope we continue it.
Gloria?
Sure. As the executive director of a nonprofit, I have an experienced perspective on which issues are best for nonprofits to handle and which issues are best for government to handle. And I know that, you know, being on council, we've worked with many nonprofits, and there are times when nonprofits reach out to us and say that they need our help, and we're always eager to help. And it's not something that sometimes a nonprofit can do because they don't have the infrastructure.
Additional follow-up? Yes, Babu?
Yeah, just to make the quick point, that housing is a critical part of this equation as well. If we want to catalyze our economy, if we want to have entrepreneurs starting new businesses, then we need to have places for those folks to live, for young professionals to live. So, that's a, housing is critical to our economic health going forward.
Any additional follow-up? All right, I'm going to move on to the next question. And I promise you, it already was the next question because it's housing. And we'll begin with Gloria. Housing. There are significant shortages of housing in Davis for both low-income residents and working families. What are the most important ways for the city of Davis to address this issue?
Sure. Building housing is a statewide challenge, and it's also a critical need. As someone that grew up housing insecure, I understand how important it is to solve this problem. And there are three things that we can do. We can plan, fund, and partner. Planning involves streamlining our permitting processes and rezoning where it makes sense to increase our density. The downtown plan is a good example of some of that planning. ADUs, which is something we worked on in the city and finding ways to make it easier to plan those and build those for folks and increase our density and build affordable housing by design. We also can convert some of our commercial and retail mixed, to mixed use. I've always advocated for building workforce housing for the missing middle, such as starter homes. And then, we have to fund, we have to find ways to fund this, and this is why I support starting a housing trust fund to help first-time homebuyers getting to starter homes and support people who are looking for, who have vouchers and who need support in that. And finally, we need to work with our nonprofits again to serve our lowest income, our lowest income earners.
Thank you. Adam, our most important ways for the city of Davis to address the shortage of housing in Davis for both low-income residents and working families?
Yes. First off, we need to make the necessary updates to the general plan. We can't keep adding and mending peripheral development that just results in patchwork and sprawl. That's the first thing that needs to be done. Any future developments should emphasize smaller homes. And a square foot's going to cost what it is. The larger the home, the more expensive it is. If you can build smaller homes, you can fit more on the same parcel, the developer's still going to make their money, and then they are more affordable. Townhomes, condos. And then, the key part of that, to make sure they don't fall into the rental market, is to specify in the CCNRs that they must be owner-occupied. That way, we maintain our housing pool, and you maintain your supply, so it helps to keep prices down. Additionally, we need to lean on UC Davis to do their part for workforce housing. I know, what was it, 15 years ago, they proposed West Village, and we considered buying there, and it's just a dirt field right now. So, we really need to be leaning on UC Davis to be doing their part. A lot of the numbers for our required low-income and very low-income housing is the result of, and I'll address it in my additional statements since I've run out of time.
Thank you. Babu, same question on housing.
Thank you, yeah. In the very short term, we need a strong and permanent affordable housing ordinance. We've had a temporary ordinance for about four years. The sunset date has been pushed back and further, further back. And that lack of policy predictability makes it very, very difficult to have a strong negotiating position when we're sitting across the table from developers. So, that ordinance right now makes it really easy. It's so flexible that it makes it really easy for developers to satisfy it without actually constructing units. Our in-loof fees are quite a bit lower than what we'd actually need to construct units. So, a strong ordinance that strongly incentivizes the construction of affordable units. Number two, housing trust fund. We do have this vehicle that's insulated from politics and must be spent, the funds in there must be spent on affordable. So, to have a principle where we maintain a minimum balance every year in the housing trust fund that actually makes it possible for us to build housing. Dense infill downtown, dense, climate-friendly, transit-linked, affordable infill. We have policy mechanisms to make that happen. We can increase density bonuses, we can eliminate parking minimums, we can fast-track developments within a high affordable percentage. So, the policy levers are there, but as Mr. Morel pointed out, one of the other things we need is to set a vision, a general plan update that will say, "This is what we want the character of our community to look like in 10, 20 years," so we attract the kind of affordable and nonprofit developers who fit that vision.
Thank you. Dan, important ways to address housing?
Sure. First, I'd start out by saying, we already have. We've approved a number of projects that are being built or will soon be built all over town. Bretton Woods is under construction, and the gem there is the 150 units of affordable housing for seniors and disabled that will come along. We've got that downtown plan that will provide 1,000 units for an estimated 2,200 people. We're working on policies that will lead to even more housing. When we were putting together our housing element, I put together a white paper and included such innovative proposals as our exploring with DJUSD use of their surplus lands for housing for teachers and their faculty on their surplus property. We proposed an approach where we use accessory dwelling units with city subsidies to have permanently affordable housing. We've taken real action to help the unhoused with Paul's Places we discussed, the Yellow Crisis Nursery, Cow Works. We're going out of our way with the Respite Center to provide a place in the daytime for people to be moved on and up to permanent housing. I think we've done a lot of right things, but the job isn't done because we have a moral and economic imperative to try to meet the housing needs of our community, which includes aged and disabled, young families, and people who work in Davis but cannot afford to live in Davis.
Thank you. Kelsey, addressing housing shortages?
Yeah, so, the first thing we really need is an update to the general plan. Our general plan is severely out of date, and developers do not know what to expect. And so, because all of our development is exceptions, it's all, it's, none of it is in the general plan. If we can update that general plan with the community leading us to tell us what kind of housing, where we can put it, where density makes more sense, that's the starting point for getting to where we want to be. I think the downtown plan is an important part of that, creating dense infill in a place where people want to live, where they won't need cars. And I think it's a good example of the potential for redevelopment within our community. I like the example of Hibbert Lumber as kind of a perfect, perfect piece of land that could be doing so much more than it currently is. Another way that we can get more infill is through ADUs. I believe the city has not gone far enough. Other cities have implemented pre-approved plans that create a much simpler process for an individual to actually implement an ADU in their backyard. Finally, I would suggest an affordable overlay zoning, which creates zoning specifically for affordable housing, allowing for density increases.
Thank you. 30-second follow-up? I believe, Adam, you had indicated.
So, we need to lean against our required low-income housing numbers because those numbers are being driven by students in the community, and we need to lean on the university to provide that housing. One other thing is, we need to stop taking in lieu of fees, with the exception of very small developments, less than 10 units. Because if we take in fees, the housing is not going to be built. The money will be spent on something else that's not going to build affordable housing, and they haven't.
Follow-up, Dan?
So, we have had another significant breakthrough in providing housing in our community. That was a memorandum of understanding with UC Davis and our city of Davis for them to help us deal with housing and transportation impacts from their growth. They are far along in completing 6,200 student beds, almost all of them on campus, that is going to take significant pressure off of our rental housing market in the city of Davis. We need to keep that kind of collaboration going, and I want them to focus more on affordable student housing.
Additional follow-up?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that it's really important to get into the policy details of this, but just from a moral perspective, you know, this, let's just call this what this is, which is, Niola County is segregated. That's what's happening right now. It's segregated by class, it's segregated by race. So, the question that's facing us from a leadership perspective, a strategic vision perspective, a moral perspective, is, a generation from now, do we want to be remembered as a city that enabled, facilitated segregation? Or do we want to be remembered as a city that was ahead of the curve in fought for housing justice, which is the defining social justice issue of our time in California?
Thank you. Additional, please? Thank you. Any additional follow-up? Thank you. Yes, Kelsey?
Yeah, I'd like to point out that Davis is a really great place to live, and there will always be a premium on housing in Davis regardless of how much we build. That's a fact. What I suggested right at the end of my regular time was an affordable overlay zoning option, which would allow for upzoning specifically if the units are affordable, which would offer affordable housing developers opportunities to develop in Davis when, if we upzoned everything, we would be pricing them out of the market.
Thank you. Additional follow-up? All right, we'll move to our next question. I want to just note to the audience, I thank you for your engagement, and just a reminder that we'll hold all applause to the end of this evening. Thank you. We move on now to the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. We'll begin with Adam. The draft Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, which, if adopted, will affect every Davis resident, presents a comprehensive roadmap to achieve carbon neutrality by 2040. How will you address resident concerns about the potentially high cost of implementation for both the city and individuals?
Yeah, I share the same concerns. We're in an old 1970s home. Our PG&E is in the ground. We looked into it just recently when we were remodeling, and it would cost us tens of thousands of dollars just to bring in more power to our house. Most people in East Davis, it's a 100-amp panel, and to do all this electrification would require people to upgrade their panels. And for most people, that's cost prohibitive. People won't then sell their homes, they'll sit on them, they'll rent them, and will lose more housing stock that way, and then they'll just let their estates pay for the upgrades when that time comes. What we need to be focusing on, because this climate action plan is basically taking a sledgehammer to a flea. The emissions from our stoves and water heaters are dwarfed by the tailpipe emissions. And what we really need to be focusing on with any future development is making sure that they are, in reality, bike and pedestrian-centered, so that we can reduce those car trips. In addition to that, what goes along with it is pushing on the university to build workforce housing, because there are many people that commute every single day to the university for work. And if we can get those people housed on campus, we can reduce those tailpipe emissions and really go after the big culprit that causes the emissions.
Thank you. How will you address resident concerns about potentially high cost of implementation for both the city and individual residents for the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan? Babu?
Thank you. With respect to individual costs, there's been a lot of community concern around the electrification at point-of-sale requirement. For me, what makes more sense is electrification at the end of useful life. So, even from an environmental perspective, it doesn't make sense to trash appliances that are in good, working order and have them be in the landfill and impose those transition costs onto individuals. And even when we do this electrification at the end of useful life, low-income families, modern-income families should be assisted in that transition with tax rebates and subsidies. For the city as a whole, yes, it will require some bold vision and finance, upfront financing to fund our Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. The good news is that there's state and federal dollars coming through the pipeline. It takes leadership and strategic vision to say, "These are what are going to be our priorities on a strict timetable." We have a lot of great ideas in the cap right now, but what doesn't get prioritized doesn't get done. I also think that, in terms of priorities, the next few years, we should be talking about the biggest bang for our buck, which is looking at solar energy generation, and storage is a critical one, especially through microgrids. Also, to look at a charging infrastructure for electric vehicles, it's also public, not as private, a charging infrastructure in rental properties, in business lots, and building out a car-free downtown. But as I said, these are all great ideas. Our long-term revenue strategy has to be predicated on an economic development identity and strategy. We have that identity around sustainability.
Thank you. Before I move on to you, Dan, I just want to remind the audience again that even whispering sometimes makes it hard for people to hear our candidates' responses. So, please, if the audience could keep their comments to the end of the program, that would really be appreciated. Apologize for that, Dan. Please, go ahead.
Sure. Have to make sure my button is on. So, our city has been leaning on climate change through Valley Clean Energy. We've got long-term purchase power contracts in place that will bring us to 85% renewable power in 2024. Our city of Davis acted to enact reach codes that will push the limits on heating and cooling and is way ahead on the electrification grid. But there is this proposal for electrification at point-of-sale. I oppose it. I will not go along with the idea that we're going to make people rip all their gas-fired appliances out of their home at a cost of tens of thousands of dollars, potentially making it impossible for young families to buy homes. What I could see as being possible is that, at the end of their useful life, we tell folks, "You know, buying a heat pump that would actually save you money and lower your electricity bill is the way to go, and we can be there with tax credits and the kinds of funds that Babu accurately referred to in rebates, just the same way I got rebates to modernize my gas furnace about eight or nine years ago." We can do it in a way that is voluntary. One of the things that I insisted in our climate action process is, we were writing this plan, that our staff score each solution coming before us and give us the overall goal, so we would know if we adopted a plan that would do some good. It turns out, not only does it do some good, but we can get there by 2030 overwhelmingly with voluntary actions.
Thank you. Kelsey, addressing cost concerns regarding the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan?
We are facing a climate emergency. We must move quickly, and I could talk about my thoughts and the ideas that I've heard from the community about...
about this for hours. But the community is very focused on whole-house electrification at the time of sale. And so I want to address that. This specific policy was pointed out by the Public Now and the NRC months ago as poor policy, as problematic. The council chose to keep it in there anyway. And the fact that it made it this far is because of a lack of communication with the community during this process. This 2025 mandate is poor policy because, right, it's going to decrease the housing stock turnover in our market, which is already very low. It's going to be extremely costly. And it creates an opportunity to spend money enforcing a mandate without actually providing any funds for it. There are simple solutions to this problem. As others have stated, we should be replacing at time of replacement, both for the environment and for our individuals. Creating fee schedules for our gas appliances could easily create funding as well.
Thank you. Gloria, same question?
Sure. So our Climate Action and Adaptation Plan right now is out for citizen input. And I think that we have all heard loud and clear that electrification at point-of-sale is something that is not acceptable. And I think I'm on board with everybody else when I say that it makes more sense to, you know, do this at the end of the useful life. And so as someone that has spent my life advocating for those on the margins, who are often the first to get left behind in any crisis, it is important that we don't burden, that we not burden this crisis on those that can least afford it. And this is why it's important for me that our Climate Action Plan be extremely thoughtful. And I think that when we put this plan together, that was pretty evident. We reached out to a number of stakeholders and took in a lot of input. So when this draft came before council, we asked for a better understanding of what items would be most cost-effective and impactful, as Dan mentioned. And because we realized, we did this because we realized that we would have to prioritize and that that was going to be really important for implementation. And finally, I think that the social justice portion of this plan was something of keen interest to me. And this meant that we really needed to look for ways to make this acceptable for everyone.
Thank you. Before we move to follow-up, I'd like to just remind the audience that we're approaching that time when I need you all to pass any audience questions toward the center. So if you have not concluded preparing your audience questions, if you will please finish up with those so you can pass those to the center within the next five minutes. Thank you. Back again to follow-up. Yes, Dan?
Sure. I just want to add a little additional perspective that a voluntary approach on electrification can be very effective. Cool Davis led the charge for a double-year solar program. They got us to 4,600 installed solar systems. Not one of those people, to my understanding, was forced to do it. But good marketing, explaining to people the benefits to them of taking this approach, was extremely effective. They're going to generate something like 24 megawatts of power collectively off of all of those solar panels installed in residences.
Additional follow-up comments? Yes, Adam? I think I saw it saying first.
So regarding the plan, it omits several key players in this. Rentals and commercial properties are exempted from this electrification. They just have to get efficient appliances. The other big one is the city itself. It commits to greening its fleet over time, but that's really unacceptable. We have facilities that are not insulated well enough and are just energy sinks. We have corporation yards where we could install solar and basically offset all of the city's electrical needs since their use occurs during the daytime. But all of that was left out. And I think the city really needs to take the lead and lead by example.
Thank you. Kelsey?
Yeah. Dan brought up Cool Davis. Was Cool Davis included in the cap process? Or are we just public commenting?
I'm going to have to leave it at that unless, because I think Dan's only made a comment, so...
I was absolutely in meetings with Cool Davis and city staff trying to iron out how to go forward on this plan.
I hope that was acceptable. Thank you, Gloria.
Sure. I agree absolutely that the city has to be part of this plan. And if you read the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, there are recommendations in there for the city beyond the electrification. And in fact, the city does have a huge solar array that's out on Road 102 that provides a great deal of solar power, you know, to the city. It's just not on our roofs.
Thank you. Any additional follow-up?
Well, if Dan got an additional one, that's to provide for the water treatment plant, not the in-city facilities.
I'm sorry, I might have spoken over you. Do you want to say what you said again?
I just said that the panels out there offset the use of the water treatment facility and not for actual city facilities.
Is there anyone else that would like an additional follow-up that is not Dan or Adam? Okay. I just really want to be, I just really want to be fair to everyone. All right, we're moving into our last moderated question. You guys have been great, by the way. Thank you so much. We're moving into our last moderated question. So I'm hoping that our league members will be collecting up the audience questions while we're doing this so we can move right into audience questions. We'll begin this last one with Babu. And this is a question regarding leadership. Although you will govern all of Davis, you are being elected by voters of a specific district. How will you address the top needs of your district?
Interesting question. Thank you. Yeah, this, I think, also speaks to your first question about listening, about how we're going to get information from the community and communicate to the community. And again, the campaign has really taught me that there's no substitute for face-to-face contact. There are a lot of disadvantages to the district system, frankly. But one of them is that your primary responsibility is to your neighborhood around you, to the district around you. And it's possible to walk it. It's possible to hold forums in each of the neighborhoods in the district, issue-based forums, as issues come up on infrastructure, on water conservation, on climate, on housing. So this kind of outreach is now part of the game plan, I think, for district-based city council members. So doing a whole lot of door-knocking, a whole lot of arranging forums, and doing active outreach to make sure groups that are particularly underrepresented are included. And one thing I'll say also is that, right now, it's, those of us that have time, resources, and frankly, the confidence to speak in public that are somewhat extroverts are the ones who are able to come to city council meetings, commission meetings, and state their voice, state their views. But really, there's a lot of people who would like to be engaged, who have great ideas. And it's on us to go to them instead of forcing them to come to us with their ideas and their views. So that kind of active outreach and listening is really important.
Thank you. Dan, same question. Although you'll govern all of Davis, you're being elected by voters of your specific district. How will you address the top needs of your district?
Well, first, I'd say we have to strike a balance. I wrote a resolution after we were forced under threat of lawsuit to go to district elections that said we weren't going to be divided as a city. We were going to govern as one. And it's just one example. We say that if somebody in another area reaches out to me for help, I'm not only allowed to help them, I'm obligated to help them. But this new approach definitely does mean we're going to have more focus on neighborhood needs. And I think you're already seeing results. I landed $250,000 on our city budget to design a roundabout that our reimagined Russell study showed is extremely dangerous location. I'm going to, once I get that drawings, I'm going to have a shovel-ready project that I can shop to a lot of folks at state and federal authorities to go after the active transportation dollars to build that thing and save lives and protect people, make it more likely that people will bicycle, more likely that they will walk to their destinations. We're fixing parks. We're paving streets. And a lot of things are going on in District 1. And part of it, I have no doubt, is our focus on paying attention to what's going on in our districts. That will be a part of our life going on. And we are hearing from them all the time about what their concerns are. And I am dedicated to meeting those needs.
Thank you. Kelsey, how will you respond to the top needs of your district?
So unfortunately, we ended up with districts, not through a community process, but through a response by council to threat of a lawsuit. They took that into their hands. And so here we are with districts. To be honest, I don't think that districts are a good thing for Davis. And I will absolutely be working to change that. We should be electing our council members at large in our community.
Thank you. Gloria, same question?
Sure. So this is about communication. This is very similar, as Babu mentioned, to the first question. And you have to be in communication with your district. I've lived in my district for 25 years. I've unlocked soccer boxes in, you know, Mace Ranch and see a lot of my neighbors when I'm out and about. And, but I also think that every policy that we, that we, you know, act on as a city, for the entire city, is an opportunity for us to think about our district and think about how that particular policy will affect our particular district. And then advocate for things in that policy that will be beneficial for our district or to speak up and say, you know, this policy is going to maybe be detrimental to my district. And so while you don't want to be parochial or, you know, separate yourself out, you also want to govern in a way that is unifying. And so I think, you know, again, it is about communication and making sure that you understand and you listen. I've done a number of things for my district even before we were in districts. Rancho Yolo is a senior mobile home park. And they needed sidewalks so they could get from their place out to the Unitrans stop. And I made that happen.
Thank you. Adam, how will you address top needs of your district?
You know, I know a lot of people didn't like switching to districts, but there are some benefits to it. It forces our leaders to be more accountable. You have a higher voter or a lower voter-to-representative ratio, so they're going to listen a lot better. Maybe if we had them sooner, we wouldn't have had Measure H show up before the voters twice and be rejected twice and more severely the second time around. It just, it makes you more accountable to the public because you are part of that same community. And like I said earlier, it makes it easier to reach more people within the community. Like I said, I'm going to have meet-and-greets out in the park, show up, bring something to share if you want. But that way, you have a better, you're getting the pulse of the community a lot more effectively. And you know what's important to them. But there are obviously issues that span the entire community, things like homelessness, affordable housing. So of course, we're still going to be advocating on behalf of everyone for solutions that affect or problems that affect everybody in the community.
Thank you. This is that opportunity for the 30-minute, 30-second follow-up. Any additional comments? Anyone? Okay. You have spoken through on that. We will move right on to audience questions. And I have quite a stack here. We're going to try and get through as many as we can. If you feel like you've answered the question succinctly, don't feel like you have to use the full minute in response, but we'll try and get through these. We're going to ask as many as we possibly can in the remaining time. And we'll move through each candidate one time without follow-up, which is what we mentioned before. Please note, there's multiple questions that have been received with the same topic or similar inquiries. And therefore, wording may be changed in order to combine a question. So if you submitted a question and you don't hear it exactly the way it was written, please understand we're trying to combine questions there. Audience questions will conclude at 8:25 to ensure time for closing statements. So we'll get to as many as we can. Once again, we begin with responses by rotating candidates. And this time, we'll begin with Kelsey. First question. There is no tree component in the downtown-specific draft or in the urban forest master plan. How would you address the lack of a city plan to improve the declining tree shade canopy in our downtown?
I agree there are missing pieces in our downtown plan. Transportation is another one that has not been addressed very well. And that's where we need to get our community involved in making sure that we have a plan that can satisfy everyone and create equitable shade, equitable transportation, an equitable downtown that can be better for everyone.
Okay. Gloria?
Sure. I think that this issue can be addressed as part of our tree ordinance, which we are, currently are working on. But I do think that this is an important one. And we have lost a number of trees downtown. And there can be, you know, ways that we can remedy that. And so I'm willing to listen and to try to make sure that we include that as part of our downtown plan.
Thank you. Adam, opportunities to address lack of city plan to improve declining tree shade?
Yeah. So it would help if we had a more robust urban forestry program within the city. Just recently, they had to repost the position for the arborist. What we need to do is pay that person enough, one, that they'll come here, and two, that they'll stay. And then we need to hire staff, eliminate the contractors, hire regular staff, break the city into five zones, spend a year in each zone maintaining, taking care of the trees, replanting, so that we can put eyes on them. And then we can better address the issues of trees dying rather than being reactionary with calling out a contractor for the work. We'll have people working on them every single day. I've proposed having two crews with three people each. That way, if someone's out sick or on vacation, the crew can still run. They need two people to safely operate the chipper. So having an inside knowledge of actual operations with the city, I think, would be very valuable in this respect.
Thank you. Addressing declining tree shade, Babu?
Yeah. This is both a climate issue and a social equity issue really important to consider. As far as where we are right now, there are several opportunities coming up. Gloria mentioned the tree ordinance. There's also the urban forest master plan. And also, we're in the EIR phase of the downtown plan. And there's opportunities there to think about how we push back and get more tree cover in our downtown.
Thank you. Dan?
Sure. There are ways we can address this. First of all, we already put money, used some of our federal COVID money as part of our downtown improvements to clean things up. as part of our downtown improvements to clean things up. We specifically said we needed to address places where there were trees that were going or lost. We planted 1,000 trees using a Prop 68 grant around our city. We are using the resources from the grant also to write an urban forest management plan update to the plan we have, which I think really does get to the larger issues of a strategy to make sure that we maintain our trees. We are trying very hard, as we tell people to cut back water on the drought, to please keep watering their trees. It's a really important message that we should repeat every chance we get. And when that downtown plan comes before us, first the planning commission will act on it next, then it will come to council. I'm happy to listen to whatever citizen suggestions come forward to us in that process.
Thank you. Second audience question, we'll start with Gloria. What are your top priorities for the general plan community vision? Put another way, what is your vision for Davis? How will you lead the charge to get us there?
That's a big question.
I know.
Yes. So I think that our general plan is, you know, way overdue, and it's definitely time for us to update our general plan, and that is a top priority. And we have to it is the roadmap and the vision for our city. And I think that it will really it will be really important that we involve our entire community in that visioning. I think that it will be really critical for us to listen to our young people in that because whatever, you know, future there is for our city should should reflect the people who are going to live in that vision.
Adam, same question about the general plan and your vision?
Could I get the question in full again, please?
Certainly. What are the top priorities? What are your top priorities for the general plan community vision? Put another way, what is your vision for Davis? How will you lead the charge to get us there?
It's not my vision, it's our vision. Any updates need to be fully citizen-driven. My job, or if I win, would be to listen to what people want. It's not about me or my personality or what I want to stamp, put my stamp on the city. It's me advocating for what the people want in the general plan. For the most part, the general plan is pretty good, but we do need to do updates. There's climate issues that need to be addressed in it. Any type of peripheral development needs to be considered because at some point in the future, we will have to build. But the issue is more about where, what, and when in those respects. But it has to be a citizen-driven process, not a personality-driven process.
Thank you. Babu, what are your top priorities for the general plan community vision? Your vision for Davis, and how will you lead the charge to get us there?
Yeah, housing and transport are the two priorities I think the community has stated in recent years. Housing, we get into these knock-down, drag-out fights every time that there's a ballot measure. And they're important fights, but also fights that could be avoided if we had a community-driven process that set the character of our community going forward 10, 20 years. What do we want housing to look like? To what extent should it be dense infill? Where are there opportunities for peripheral development, and when is it worth it? The other aspect to this is is transport. We've done great on bicycling infrastructure, but there's a lot more that we could do to move the needle on reducing carbon emissions and ultimately transitioning people to using their cars a lot less than they do right now. We know that cities around the world have built designed their cities to be human-centered. We can do that. We can do that here. It implies a major shift in the way we move around, the way we live, but we know it's possible. It just requires a vision, and the general plan process is the vehicle by which we set that vision.
Dan, your top priorities for general plan community vision and how you'll lead the charge to get us there?
Sure. So we're having a sort of harmonic convergence of finishing off major planning projects that relate to being able to start a general plan. The downtown planning is actually the first element of our general plan update. The CAP will inform every element of a general plan. And our housing element is probably just a couple of months and a couple of hearings away from being finalized and getting the state housing and community development department approval. So that sets the stage. We've already approved in concept funding in our budget in our two-year cycle to start a general plan update. The key issues will be, how much do we want to grow? Where do we want to grow? And how do we want to grow in the sense of what kind of mix do we want between residential? What kinds of residential? Do we want to try anything with for retail or or commercial? The mix of those questions are the key questions to involve our community in. I think we can do that, but I do want to listen to what folks say about what they want to do. I tried to spark this conversation with our planning commission in a workshop a few weeks ago. I want to hear what they want to do.
Thank you. Kelsey, same question. Your top priorities for general plan community vision and how you'll lead the charge to get us there?
Yeah, so let's start with actually leading the charge. We've heard a lot of ideas on what topics are important, but really what's more important is having someone on council who is advocating for the community and creating opportunities for that community input that doesn't just involve commissions, but involves our interfaith communities, our nonprofit communities, our neighborhood communities. We must speak to as many people as possible to get these visions aligned so that we can move forward together. We are we have been in this place for a long time now. Where moving forward often required exceptions to general plan. And we have to get back to actually planning for the community that we want.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question. I believe we begin with Adam, if I've been going around the circle correctly. The question relates to our limited water situation. Can you express how you feel it relates to or should relate to development in Davis?
I think that actually is a valid question for the entire state. We can't keep growing in a population. Water is a finite freshwater is a finite resource. It's not just always going to be there. I think that actually does need to be factored into any future development plans. Is do we have the water to support it? Right now, we've shut off all of our mid-deep wells in the city because they are contaminated for chromium 6, and that's a new listing by the EPA. So we actually have less water availability than we did before because of closing those wells. I think we should have did, excuse me, should have negotiated better with and I'm blanking on the property where we got our water. We have very junior rights now for our water. So if anyone's paying attention to what's coming out of your tap, it's groundwater at this point. We are not drawing very much fresh water.
Thank you. Babu, same question, our limited water situation and how you feel it relates to development in Davis?
Yeah, this is a major question for the general plan update process as well. When we think about where we want housing to be and how dense it's going to be, how expansive it's going to be, those are questions that are linked to water supply. This is something where we have to look 10, 20, 30, 40 years forward. In the short term, though, there are water conservation practices that other cities, other locations have adopted. For example, gray water ordinances that go beyond what we do now as a city. There's also incentives for private landowners to conserve water, both home water and also their landscape water. So there's short-term things we can do, but that general plan update really has to incorporate thinking about water in the long term.
Thank you. Dan, same question?
So historically, the big whiff around here is that we didn't get in on the Berriessa Dam, but there's there's nothing we can do about that at this point. But there was a smart move we did make to buy Sacramento River water rights. And we're doing everything we can to use those water rights in a conjunctive use fashion with our deep-water aquifers, as other jurisdictions are doing. We're testing and analyzing whether taking our river water in times when we get a pretty full allocation and put it into our aquifer for use later, we're testing to see if that is a workable strategy that would take our actually very ample water supplies and stretch them very further, much further. There are exhaustive analyses that have been done that show that our combination of surface water and our aquifers are going to take care of us for decades. But we still have an obligation as a community to conserve every which way we can, except for we do need to keep watering those trees.
Kelsey, same question, our water situation and how it relates to development in Davis?
Yeah, so unfortunately, right, the city can only do its part, right? There are, you know, the fact of the matter is that manufacturing and ag use much more water than development in our town. We can do what we can to create developments that are friendly to our environment. You know, requiring developments or incentivizing developments to collect gray water is a huge piece of that. But also, you know, working backwards to where we actually, as individuals, as a community, are spending the most of our water resources, right? So for a lot of us, it's the meat that we eat that actually uses the most water. It's not anything that you're really doing in your, you know, in your day-to-day life in your home.
Thank you. Gloria, water situation and how it relates to development in Davis?
Sure. And so I think that this is also going to be another important part of our general plan and, you know, making sure that we and also our climate action plan and making sure that we incorporate things that have been mentioned here around water conservation, such as the gray water systems. And I think it was a great idea for us to get our aquahawks and so that people would understood, you know, how they're using water. And as part of that understanding is to continually educate our community and so that everyone feels that they are part of this solution. And I think that's that's going to continue to be that's going to continue to be a critical part of this. And as we said, you know, we've done some analysis, and so we have to continue to look and see where we are so that we can continue to get that information out to folks.
Thank you. We're going to go into the next audience question. We'll start with Babu, and the question is, what should city council do to address homelessness?
Thank you. This is something that the Social Services Commission that I'm a part of and was the chair of has been focusing on the last four years. I'm also on the steering committee of the Davis Homelessness Alliance, which is something that's really close to my professional interest and to my heart. The 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 good news is that we know what works to to improve homelessness, and that's get people into housing first, permanent supportive housing first. We know that at least half of the houseless population, if given the opportunity to connect to housing and social services, mental health, substance use, other services that they need, will take it. So what we need to do is to plan to have that permanent supportive housing distributed across town. We also know that the other half of the population resists that kind of connection. The only thing that's worked in other cities is to create community health worker outreach programs, navigator programs that build trust over time until people are ready to accept housing in connection to social services. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan, same question. How should the city council, what should the city council, I'm sorry, do to address homelessness?
So I'll again talk about what the council did as opposed to what we might do. So we took the bold step of creating a respite center. We worked hard with the neighborhood to make them understand the need for it and to make sure we addressed their needs. We contributed money to Paul's Place and zoned the land for it so it could be built. We supported the Cow Works project down there at Pacifico in the face of considerable community opposition. And then I helped broker a compromise so that Plaza 2555 could be built. It should be three fives. The key to that was they were dedicating land to allow an expansion of the Yellow Crisis Nursery, which is serves our hidden homeless. There's the folks who have to couch surf with their kids, perhaps because of a domestic violence situation in their home. They're not so visible, but they're just as important. And in fact, they're kids, so we really need to pay attention to them. So we're we focused on all of these. The point-in-time count for Davis shows it's gone down slightly. I would call it flat. I think it shows we're on the right track.
Thank you. Kelsey, what the city council should do to address homelessness?
Yeah, we should house people and provide services to those people. This should be a part of a bigger system. We have a Department of Housing and Social Services now. We need to staff it so that we can get started on this work. It's important that we have, you know, a place where people know they can go to be safe and housed. And it's also important that we are we have staff that are active in outreach to the people who are not currently housed. It's also really important that, you know, we realize that the majority of people who are experiencing homelessness are not the people that we think of, right? They're not the people who we might interact with downtown. They are living in their cars. They are they are hidden because it is not children would be taken away otherwise. And we need to be serving that community.
Thank you. Gloria, what the city council should do to address homelessness?
Sure. So I am very proud of the work that I did on the subcommittee to that led to the creation of the Department of Housing and Social Services. And the the person that we hired for that, Dana Bailey, is excellent, and she's already come up with a number of ideas. And I think it is because of this, because the city has this track record of working with our nonprofits, that we that Davis is actually ahead of its neighbors in terms of housing, our housing insecure. And I think that that's an important thing. It's that's an important piece because we have been we have been working on this problem for for quite a while. I worked with steak 20 years ago, and so I'm 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 very close to this, very close to this population of folks, and it's very important to me.
Thank you. And Adam, what the city council could do to address homelessness?
Yeah, I would close a respite center, take that money that we're continually spending and give it to the nonprofits. Get all the players down at the same table and see what we can do as a city to help facilitate their mission. We don't have the subject matter experts. We don't have the people that have been in the trenches doing the work. We need to facilitate the people that are actually already doing that work. We need to get more agencies involved. My father worked for Monterey County as the director of Veterans Affairs. There's a lot of veterans out there suffering from PTSD and emotional issues and drug issues. And they would go into the camps and actually look for veterans so that they could funnel them into the VA system and utilize those federal funds that have already been set aside to assist them. We also need to work with our downtown business association because it is a problem for them as well. It represents security issues for them and in addition, yes, so.
Okay, we're going to try and sneak in one more audience question here. And I think we start with Dan on this one. How can Davis preserve and honor open space while also increasing our ability to house more of our workforce and families?
So we have actually a very aggressive and expansive open space program. We have our own parcel tax that's been on the books for many years that's generating money for that purpose. We have development impact fees that are imposed on projects for the very same purpose. And we have a very large balance in that fund. It's because, though, for a good reason. Our folks have used that money very effectively. They've leveraged it against grants. They've they've used it in partnership with other governmental agencies like the county. It's been a great result. It's just we actually are in a situation where I think we need to think more ambitiously about the use of those funds in order to meet state constraints. The places where we're creating open space reserves aren't really in conflict with, you know, future projects. Well, we don't know where those will be until we do our general plan or do some kind of land use plan to figure out where should peripheral growth be. But we have a lot of places that are in reserves.
Thank you. Kelsey, how to preserve and honor our open space while increasing our ability to house more of our workforce and families?
Yeah, so I've talked a lot about infill and redevelopment of of areas identified by our community, and I think that is hugely important. I think the other piece is that general plan update that we desperately need so that we can tell the people who the developers who own all of the land right around Davis, what they will be able to do with it, whether they will be allowed to develop it or if we're looking at, you know, something that that does not allow development in certain areas. I also think that, you know, thinking about peripheral development, we should be asking for, you know, open space near that development, next to, adjacent to that development, as is the idea of of preserving that open space.
Thank you. Gloria? Want me to repeat the question? Sure. How can Davis preserve and honor open space while also increasing our ability to house more of our workforce and families?
Sure. And so as Dan mentioned, we do actually do, we actually do have a pretty robust fund that preserves our open space. We have a, you know, wonderful area that we just opened up down in the, you know, South Peta Creek area there. And so and we and we regularly buy easements so that people can enjoy that open space. And so I think that we are very, very, we're a community that's very cognizant and and realize that that open space is important for us, and it's and it's important that we continue to preserve that open space. As Kelsey mentioned, I think it's important to, when we do peripheral developments, that the mitigation, there is mitigation that goes into those developments and that that mitigation is adjacent to the to the developments.
Thank you. Adam, same question, preserving and honoring open space while increasing our ability to house more of our workforce and families?
Like most people have said, we need to update the general plan so that we know where we're going to build, what we're going to build, and when we're going to build it. I think we need to utilize conservation easements for ag land. Ag land is open space. We need to protect some of the most valuable soils in the world. Measure H would have actually obliterated prime ag land. And so we need to prioritize where we're looking for open spaces. Just down the road from my house, Mace Ranch Park, used to be a prime burrowy now habitat. We saw coyotes there. We saw coyotes there. We need to identify those places and protect them rather than building token open space areas elsewhere, because once the owls leave, they're not going to come back, and that's a perfect example of shortsightedness in our open space policies. And again, as far as housing, we really need to lean on UC Davis to take up the baton and start building workforce housing on campus where they have the space.
And Bapu, I believe you have the last word on this one?
Thank you. There are some worrying fractures that are running throughout our community in terms of the tension between social equity and housing and open space habitat and agricultural land preservation. I, and we see those fractures every time that there's a peripheral proposal. I don't think those fractures need to exist. I think these priorities can be complementary. I think everyone in this room cares about both social equity and the environment. The answer is a natural coalition between folks who want to protect some of the world's finest agricultural land, some high-quality open space and habitat, and those who are willing to build dense infill downtown. Dense, affordable, climate-friendly, transit-linked infill. There's a potential for the climate communities, agricultural communities, open space communities, and the social justice communities to come together in a common effort to build this coalition and build that infill.
Thank you. Unfortunately, we have several more audience questions, but we don't have the time for several more audience questions. We want to make sure you have adequate time for your closing statements. So I want to thank the candidates and the audience members for their questions, and we'll move now to the candidate closing statements. In accordance with the opening random draw, we begin our closing statements hearing in the same order. And so we will hear first from District One, and we will hear from Bapu and Dan and Kelsey in that order, and then we will hear from District Four, from Gloria and Adam. So if you would like to present your closing statement, Bapu, please go first.
Thank you, and thank you for the invitation to the League and for everyone for coming out. The principle that's at the heart of everything that I'm running on is interdependence. I was born in India, immigrated here when I was four, grew up in a working-class neighborhood of Chicago in a segregated area of Los Angeles. I came to UCD for my bachelor's and master's, studied sustainable agriculture, environmental ethics. I went abroad to work on issues of child hunger and climate change and gender equality. And throughout all of those experiences, the most important lesson I learned is that every person's well-being is intertwined, utterly dependent on the well-being of every other person, and in fact, of every other being, every other living being, and non-living beings, air, water. James Baldwin has a quote, "The sea rises, the light fails, lovers cling to each other, children cling to us. The moment we cease to hold each other, the moment we break faith with one another, the sea engulfs us and the light goes out." I'm running for city council because I believe the number-one responsibility of an elected official is to help people feel more connected to each other and to the natural world. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan?
And again, thanks to the League for hosting this wonderful event and to my colleagues for this very intelligent conversation we're having tonight. After you elected me to council, I did something a little unusual. I did exactly what I promised. I focused on fixing our finances, fixing our streets and bike paths, and mending our relationship with UC Davis. Our funding gap is down from about $8 million four years ago to $4 million now. We've got an $84 million plan over 10 years to fix our roads and bike paths. Through year four, we fully funded it, and we're fixing stuff out there. And after the campus released its growth plan in 2018, we got them to agree to a binding enforceable contract with our city to help mitigate the impacts of their growth on housing and transportation. They're far along in adding 6,200 student beds. They helped us rebuild the Russell Bike Path. Great things are happening. If you reelect me, I will again work on the things that I promised, which include finishing off the job and getting our finances straightened out.
Thank you. Closing statement, Kelsey?
I'm here today because it is time for a new generation of leadership. I'm inspired by the young people around the world and here in our community who are asking for action and continue to feel unheard and uncertain about their, our, future. A lack of leadership and planning in our local government has created a fractured community. We must come together to create a vision for Davis's future that we can all agree on so that we can move forward and have a future. Thank you all for being here today.
Thank you. Closing statement, Gloria?
Once again, thank you to the League and thank you to the audience here and watching this recording. It is all of you that make our community a great place to live. I've been struck over and over again by the passion and commitment our community invests in its common good. Because of this, I strive to listen and find solutions to the issues that matter to you. Being on council requires the ability to research best practices and find solutions that serve everyone. It means pausing to ensure all voices have been heard. It requires making tough choices that are sometimes not popular, but always making them in the best long-term interest of our community. It requires working collaboratively with colleagues on council and regionally to build consensus in order to secure resources and move forward. I would be honored to have another four years to continue to work hard for you.
Thank you. Closing statement, Adam?
Thank you again to the League and everyone that has shown up. I'm just a regular person. I'm not a politician. I have no interest in being that. I'm running because the city has neglected its essential duties of maintaining our infrastructure, which includes the bike paths, the roads, the sewers. We need to make sure we're taking care of our public safety, our parks, and creating a healthy business environment. These are what local government is established to do, and we have been neglecting a lot of that. If I can accomplish what I would like to see done in four years, you're not going to see my name on a ballot again. But if have to, then I'll go out again. But otherwise, you know, it's, I'm just here to fix things, honestly. That's why I'm running, is I want to fix things.
Thank you. This concludes our closing statements and our District One and District Four candidate forum. My deep appreciation to all of the candidates here today and your commitment to public service while you thank the League. The League thanks you. Without your participation and your graciousness this evening, we don't have forums like this, and we would like to continue having these kinds of nonpartisan forums for the good of our community. Please join me in a round of applause to thank all of our candidates this evening. And I'm sure the candidates join me in thanking our audience for your generous attention, participation, and your gracious welcome to our candidates. On behalf of the League, I ask that you please make sure to complete and return the short survey you received at the door, and if you did not receive one, please pick one up before you leave. Your feedback as audience members is essential to ensure no-cost, nonpartisan League forums that best meet our community's voter education needs. League members and the candidates remind you that voter information and election materials for candidates will be available on the tables outside the door. Again, this forum has been recorded, so if you would like to review it again, thanks to Davis Media Access, this can be viewed on the League of Women Voters Davis Area website, Finally, on behalf of all of us at the League of Women Voters Davis Area, thank you for attending. Travel home safely, and have a good evening.